Twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one meeting of the Louisville Planning Commission. Ms. Brackett, would you please call the roll?
Hey, Commissioner Deal.
Here.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Vice Chair Heffner.
Here. And do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any, any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion so, to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, is an opportunity for public comment on items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public in attendance who would like to provide comment on something that does not appear on tonight's agenda?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Well, that brings us to our only item, which is continued business. It is the Foundry GDP Amendment, which is a request for approval of the Seventh Amendment to the Dakota General Development Plan to allow up to fifty-nine dwelling units and fifteen thousand square feet of commercial development. And this has been continued from the August twelfth, twenty-twenty-one meeting. I will now open the public hearing on this matter. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested, all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the Planning Commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the Planning Commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function if participating by computer or by pressing star nine if calling in by telephone. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I'll then close the public hearing and no further testimony or evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The Planning Commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue the item to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've just described? Hearing and seeing none, I would ask staff if we have proper notification of this item.
Yeah, so this item was continued. It was originally noticed for, I believe it was June twenty-fourth, and has been properly continued since that time. And so we, we are able to consider the case today.
And do any Planning Commission members have any disclosures that they would like to make?
I, I guess I don't have a disclosure, but, um, or, or in particular, but I would like to, at some point, make a comment about my ability to act on behalf of this, this item because I was able to review the packet material from before and watch the recorded video of your meeting last month, which was very illuminating. And you guys had some really great discussions. So I really appreciated the opportunity to review the meeting. You, you spent some good time on discussing, just getting to this point here this evening too, which was interesting to, to witness. So, yeah.
And Chairman Person, Vice Chair, if I could just mirror Commissioner Moline's comments. I was also able to watch the video as well as read the minutes and in its entirety from June twenty-fourth.
Terrific, thank you. Unless there are further disclosures, I turn to staff for a presentation.
Great, thank you. So, yeah, thanks for taking care of that, Commissioners Howe and Moline. So I have updates to the presentation in all of the same slides, but I'm not going to go through all of them in great detail. But I, they are in here in case you'd like to come back to them. And the applicant is in a similar, hoping to get kind of a similar brief presentation to you as well after mine. And we do questions, so just to kind of address some of the comments and things like that. So just as you know, the property is located on the corner of Pascal Drive and Highway forty-two, up in the northern part of the city. Not going to go through the background at this point. If we need to come back and reference this, this is the previous site plan for the previous boundary PUD. So generally, the proposal tonight consists of reducing the maximum commercial to fifteen thousand square feet, increasing the residential units to fifty-nine from thirty-two. It revises access from Calix Avenue to One Way Inn, removes the requirement for the age restriction, reduces maximum height from third, to thirty feet from thirty-five, as well as some other minor amendments to lot width and lot size standards. For reference, again, this is not binding. It's not really part of any, it's, it's, it's a, it's an exhibit for this application, but it's not binding. But it's the applicant's intent for future development. But again, anything that complies with the CDDSG and the GDP could be developed. We have some slides for traffic if we need to come back to this, some comparisons for density. If we want to bring up the density conversation again, we have this slide to refer to. And then again, so from, you know, kind of late in the game on the twenty-fourth, the applicant revised the concurrency requirement. And I know the commercial balance was kind of a primary point of discussion last time. So we will go through this one in more detail. But basically, the concurrency requirement for the GDP ultimately will result in full buildout of the site. However, it's broken up in two phases. And so the first phase is an allowance for sixty percent of the residential permits with fifty percent of the commercial permits. And then the final would be forty percent of the residential permits with the final fifty percent of commercial. And just for, so that would result in ultimately fifteen thousand square feet of commercial development. Just want to note, though, that the previous PUD, even though the GDP allowed up to seventy-six thousand square feet of commercial, the previous PUD, which authorized development on the site, only required collectively about thirty-two thousand square feet. But the concurrency requirement on that only required one of the two buildings. And that developer had only pulled the permit, only intended, excuse me, to pull permits for the fourteen thousand square feet of commercial. So the maximum guaranteed commercial on the previous PUD was slightly less than this GDP at fourteen thousand one hundred and ten. So just for a little bit of comparison, um, comparison on that. So we do, we did run the fiscal model. Again, this image in front of you is the same fiscal model that was run for the previous packet. And so I'll walk through these in more detail. But this is basically assuming a full buildout at kind of predicted market conditions, where we worked with the applicant to determine kind of build price for both the residential and commercial development. And so this would assume full buildout at kind of their targeted market, market prices. All of these scenarios are positive, although, you know, it varies to some degree. So let's go through these a little bit more specifically. So the current foundry PUD is that current foundry application that was previously on the books, that with the thirty-two units and the roughly thirty-two thousand square feet of commercial. If that built out, you can see a net fiscal impact of roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollars annually. The GDP that you have in front of you tonight, so proposed foundry GDP, again, this is just for this site. So the assumptions that we put in here, I want to talk a little bit more about the assumptions. So the residential, the residential units, we use kind of a typical census data for this type of product on kind of number of unit or number of people in each household, average household income, things like that. But where this is most influenced is the assumptions we made in the commercial mix. And so within the fifteen thousand square feet, staff modeled five thousand square feet of that being filled with retail uses, so sales tax generating uses, five thousand square feet as office, and five thousand square feet as service. And so of the fifteen thousand, we were conservative on our sales tax generating uses within the fifteen thousand square feet. So I think, you know, we just want to be clear on that. I think we were, even in this high scenario, we didn't model an assumption that that would all be retail, which would only drive this number higher. And so I just want to be clear on that, that we think that this is the conservative side of the high model for full buildout on this GDP. Next, we're moving into kind of a total area. And so, you know, last time we took the concurrency requirement to City Council for when the previous owner asked to amend their concurrency requirement, City Council approved that, but they said, hey, you know, next time this application, should it have to be considered again for any PUD amendments, any GDP amendments, what have you? They were interested in understanding how the entire neighborhood balances fiscally. And so not just the foundry site, but really the old, old original intent of the GDP. And so really, this site was part of, as you know, the larger overall Dakota GDP, which has roughly five hundred housing units. And this was intended to be the commercial hub of that overall GDP. And so they wanted to understand kind of the fiscal balance of how this neighborhood would function fiscally with these two scenarios. And so what we did here is we, we modeled for the existing portions, all of the residential units. We went back and kind of averaged out what the home prices were at the time, the build prices were at the time. And we did that for both scenarios. And then we modeled in the assumptions for the foundry PUD and the foundry GDP as for the commercial. And so really, both of those are negative because they are predominantly and overwhelmingly residential in both cases. In the delta there, you can see, is a little different. So the, you know, you're negative, but the degree to which you're up is different than when you model just the foundry site. And I wish I could explain to you exactly all of the intricacies and assumptions that go into building our fiscal model. But it is phenomenally complicated and has a lot of assumptions built in around size of households, number of units, price of units, things like that. And so these two models, they don't translate on a kind of equal, equal. So we trust our model and we, you know, the assumptions are accurate, but I can't, I can't actually explain all of the differences for why these aren't kind of coming out to the same degree. So a little bit of background there. So next, we modeled the low scenario. And the low scenario now was adjusted because the foundry, so we'll go through these. The current foundry PUD, that assumed kind of only one of those commercial buildings got built out and all thirty-two of the residential units got built out. So you can see that one's still positive, but it's to less degree. The proposed foundry GDP, this one does swing into the negative category, even though it does result in full buildout. But primarily, that's because we're reducing the sales tax generating space and reducing the property values. Primarily, this one's driven by a reduction in property value, kind of the property value assumption. So we reduce the market values and the construction costs for the residential units and then the build costs and construction costs and the market costs or market value for the commercial. And so that's how you get to the low scenario. We then translated that to the whole Dakota neighborhood. Here, we call the ultra-high. So the compare, the only difference on this one is going back to the original foundry GDP, which would have authorized, which authorizes seventy-six thousand square feet of commercial. So really, the only column that changed here, whereas previously it said current foundry PUD, now you see current foundry GDP. And so that's why that number is so much higher, is because you could model in, you know, seventy-six thousand square feet of retail use. So that's kind of your ultimate generation of revenue would be if all seventy-six thousand square feet go as retail. So that's kind of your maximize, you know, your maximum scenario, although I think any market study we've ever done would say that the feasibility of this in this market and probably next ten to twenty-year cycle is not likely, which is why we didn't model that originally, but a number of you did ask for that. So that's what this slide is. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. But with that, we are recommending approval of the application. Yeah.
So Lisa, can you go back to the high slide?
Yes.
And I, I had asked you this question. I think I might understand where some of the numbers are coming from. So my question was, if there's a two million dollar, just call it two million dollars round numbers, between the current foundry PUD and the proposed foundry GDP, basically, you know, we're losing out on a two million dollar benefit over twenty years, correct? So why wouldn't there be at least a two million dollar difference in the total Dakota? Because obviously, foundry is part of the total. But I think, what I heard, I think what I heard you say is that the proposed GDP, kind of the revised number, the revised model, takes into account the significant increase in prices of these new townhomes. And I bet you that's going to generate revenue that offsets, obviously, the two million dollar loss on the commercial.
Yeah, I do think that that's probably part of it. And honestly, I think that there's just behind, some behind the scenes assumptions when, so part of the model also factors in, you know, you hit a certain degree of development and you're triggering need for additional city resources or you're triggering needs for additional city staff. There's a lot of assumptions built into this model behind the scenes that we don't really have. It's a proprietary model that was created for the city. We didn't ask the consultant to kind of dive in to some of those assumptions, but there are some assumptions built in that based on magnitude of what you're modeling, change outputs. So that's kind of a high-level answer, but I, I think you are correct in that assumption as well. There's just a lot of different variables that go into it.
Okay. And then can you go back a couple of slides to concurrency?
Yes.
And I don't think anything's changed, but just to reiterate, for the current proposed concurrency language, the sixty-forty, based on, you know, they're building fifty percent of commercial, that is only core and shell.
Yes.
That still remains the case. And then, another question on that last bullet. Oh, so the previous PUD required fourteen thousand of commercial, but of course, that was only the, with the thirty-six units, residential units.
Thirty-two, yep.
Thirty-two. So obviously, a much lower number. Okay, that's all I had.
Yep.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Howe.
So Lisa, back to the fiscal models. So I think you answered this. I just want to clarify that your assumptions, and I know that it's more complicated than we can go into details to, but the question may be a little simpler than, than the whole answer. The fiscal models or projections, how likely, using current commercial vacancy rates, could these projections be higher or lower? And I, and I think you said that it takes it into account, but I just want to confirm that.
So we don't actually, so with the model, the model doesn't give us necessarily a picture of market feasibility. So we are plugging in our own, you know, where, timing. So we are coming up with all of those inputs. So it doesn't factor in, it doesn't factor in market feasibility. And it also only gets updated every few years. And so I think the last time the consultant updated kind of all of this, the model with most recent current city numbers was, I believe, in twenty-eighteen. And so some things that have changed since twenty-eighteen, and we need to get the fiscal model updated sometime within the next few years, but ultimately, that happens at the direction of City Council. What we're seeing internally in our finance committee has been studying this in greater detail. And I don't have numbers for you, but I just want you to know that we are, due to recent changes in federal and state laws, we have the ability to a much larger degree, as you've probably noticed, when you order things online, to capture sales tax revenues, you know? And so if you probably remember, three or four years ago on Amazon, when you hit buy, you weren't paying a tax, whereas now you are. And so we are seeing a much greater degree of internal sales tax capture for online sales for residential. You know, they come that are driven from our residential developments. And so our fiscal model doesn't capture that. So there are some things in here that it's not capturing, both because we only do the inputs on city numbers every, you know, so often. And one of those isn't upping the online's tax capture.
But we would be assuming maybe a hundred percent tendency of the commercial buildings?
Yep, so, yeah, so this would assume that these are all occupied. And again, the mix on the high scenario is fairly conservative. So only one-third of that occupancy is retail. And the other two-thirds would be non-sales tax generating, so a mix of office and service use. And so I think we were fairly, you know, fairly conservative and realistic on, even on this high scenario for the revenue generation that would occur in the commercial structures. And when we say retail, we typically include restaurant in that category.
And, and, you know, I just, just to clarify, just to put this in perspective, and I think I have my numbers right, but I just want to clarify. I looked at the twenty-twenty-one Louisville budget, Louisville budget and revenue.
Yeah.
And so I'm just trying to put in perspective how much of this revenue, this shortage, this loss, it would be. And so we're looking at about a potential budget of fifty thousand dollars. We're looking at about maybe a point-two percent. Would I be correct in those numbers?
I would have to verify that.
Okay.
You, you, you're probably very capable at math, but I don't want to confirm without having
Right.
doing the math myself.
I just wanted to get like a twenty thousand foot view to put that in perspective because obviously, a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars is a lot of money. But when you look at it in respect to the entire budget, it may not be as big as you think it would be.
I would agree with you on that statement. From an order of magnitude of our overall city budget, this is, this is not, you know, within this development, I don't think there would be anyone who would say this is going to make or break city, you know, city coffers one way or the other. But certainly, collectively as a city, we all want to watch our revenues and make sure that we're going in the right direction. But I do, I think that's a, I think that's an accurate statement, you know, with respect to this development.
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Moline.
Thank you, Vice Chair Heffner. Lisa, can you, when, just a little bit more information about the, the complete kind of total Dakota GDP? I don't, I don't have the, I apologize, I don't have your, the staff report pulled up on my computer at the moment. But are this, we are really talking about the very, this is, this is a great, yeah, this is a, this is a perfect exhibit. This really is the last pieces of the entire GDP. So what I, what I, one question I had was, and it might have been in the staff report, what's the, what, what's left, what's being left kind of on the table for the GDP in terms of both, in terms of both dwelling units and, and some of the other square footage things? So, yeah.
That's a great question. So within the model, we modeled, you know, kind of the foundry properties here, so I don't have it shown on the map. But we modeled, we included in the model, you know, these five kind of neighborhoods within the Dakota GDP. And so it's, you know, roughly five hundred and some units. So these were all the residential units that we modeled. It, you can see on the south end, we have the North Main apartment, so, you know, twenty-four Ds per acre, two hundred and some units. And we kind of transitioned in density, you know, kind of throughout. But, yeah, so basically, we modeled these. So within the Dakota development, what's not shown, that's also technically part of the Dakota GDP, but it was kind of a standalone amendment, was Kestrel.
Okay.
Kestrel is also part of this, but because it was its own amendment and it's, you know, kind of a fundamentally different type of development, being a county housing authority project, we didn't include it in the analysis.
Got it.
So within the remaining, there would be no development left. So there's no additional residential development capacity on any of the, to my knowledge, on any of the other five neighborhoods. So this would round out what's allowed within this GDP area. Within Kestrel, just for comparison, though, I do think there's probably, I think there's another twelve, maybe dwelling units possible that could go back here. And then there's one, or two commercial pad sites that Boulder County Housing Authority owns that at some point may develop commercially. But we didn't include those in the model.
Okay, so at the, at the, maybe I'm not, I might not be quite saying this right, but at the time of the initial approval of the entire Dakota GDP.
Yeah, okay.
There would have been, you know, this many, you know, so many residential units and so much square footage of the other thing. And, and so now that we're putting the very last piece of the puzzle into the, into place, were there still, did the, did some of those original GDPs allow for, for more development, I guess, than, than is actually being realized?
Where we are?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, I did look back at all, at the history of the GDPs. What's unique about this GDP, which makes it hard to track from kind of day one to day now, is they kind of came in in different chunks and pieces.
Okay.
So the residential units shifted, but never was there more, to my recollection, never was there more than the seventy-six thousand square foot commercial allotment. So I don't think that was, I don't think that's been reduced. They've swapped and added dwelling units here and there. And I think the commercial allowance kind of fluctuated up and down as pieces came in and
Okay.
peeled off. But I think the maximum, to my recollection, for commercial was seventy-six, which is still in place now.
Okay, thank you very much. And then one, one question, again, I haven't maybe been following like commercial concurrency requirements in this age of, you know, where we've, where we've come in the last couple of years. And I'm just, I'm just curious if, if you happen to have a sense of have, have other municipalities and other places had to kind of revisit these kinds of, these kinds of things, given, given the, our current situation in, in the country as a whole, in terms of retail? And I'm just curious if you have thoughts about that, yeah?
I think that's a great question. I know that this is a general concern, you know, nationally, and Colorado in particular, just given the way our tax structure is set up.
Yeah.
I, um, I would imagine that there's other communities that do have similar requirements. I can't speak to any specific examples of that offhand. I'm happy to do research and bring that back to you, either for this or for kind of a general answer at some point in the future. So I would imagine it exists, but I can't speak to specifics.
Okay, that's, yep, totally understandable. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Sure.
I, unless there are any other questions, I actually just have one.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions? I, I was hoping, Lisa, you could just remind us where we are in the process with this being a GDP amendment and, and what it is that we're being asked to approve versus what's sort of on the table for a later date.
Absolutely. So, yeah, just for the benefit of the commission, as well as for anyone listening in the audience, prior to pulling a building permit to authorize construction, we need a couple layers of approvals. The first layer is zoning, and in this case, the zoning consists of this GDP. And so they have zoning in place through the current GDP, but the applicant is asking to amend the GDP, which would amend the underlying zoning. The next step in the process would be approval of a planned unit development, and that's basically a site plan. And that would be the specific architecture, site layout, size of units, heights, elevations, landscape, what have you. So they would need, they'll still need that layer of approval, and that goes through public hearings before Planning Commission and City Council. And once they get through that, then they would be eligible to pull, to pull building permits.
Great, thanks. So even though we have this conceptual site plan, we're not being asked to sign off on that?
No, that is a conceptual site plan, not binding in any way, just represents the applicant's intent, but wouldn't. And I haven't reviewed it to large degree for conformance with any of our other regulations, but it's likely feasible. But wouldn't, and I haven't reviewed it to large degree for conformance with any of our other regulations, but it's likely feasible.
Great. Any other planning commission questions of staff? Uh, hearing none, I will ask if the applicant has a presentation for us.
I do. Thank you. Good evening and thanks, everybody, for your time. I'm Brian Bear with Mass Equities. We are a local Colorado developer, actually live in Longmont, and I've got a few slides for you.
Mr. Bear, would you give us your address just for the record?
Yeah, 7552 North 83rd Street in Longmont.
Thank you.
Yep. I heard the comments early on that everybody got through the video and, and information from the prior meetings. So I don't, I don't want to put too much in front of you, but I got a handful of slides that I wanted to take you through. And also wanted to, uh, there's been a lot of talk and good, good discussions about the commercial. And so let me, let me jump into it and take you through some slides that I have here. You know, if you can see the presentation there.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay. So just a little recap of what I just said, we, we did some introductions in the last, uh, meetings and presented some neighborhood context. Lisa did a lot of this already, so I, I won't, I won't bore you with that information, but just a little recap of what we did, uh, in the June meeting. I did want to talk about this, this concept site plan a little bit, uh, more for context for you all about the work we did with the neighborhood. So we spent over six months during COVID, which was interesting, uh, in 2020, meeting with the neighborhood. Most of our meetings were outside, all of our meetings were outside. And, uh, it was widely attended. We had, uh, over 50 people in three sets of meetings. And then we also had direct contact with the leadership of the three different HOAs, the four different HOAs. We spent a lot of time with the neighborhood groups, uh, with a lot of different concept plans to get a sense of what they wanted. And, um, not only did we, and this is where we ended up with this concept of some duplexes, some townhomes, but also this concept of this sort of mini, uh, neighborhood serving center. I don't want to say a town center, it's overused. But this little mini center and this gathering place with a park and some commercial, some neighborhood serving retail. And so, uh, it was actually a really fun exercise. We got a lot of great feedback. And, um, and, and that was sort of the, the underpinnings of getting everybody, trying to get the neighbors comfortable with this process and where we were heading. So, um, that's sort of what evolved. We also talked a little bit about, you know, height. And we originally came in with three stories. We brought it down to two. You know, we, we, we tinkered with a lot of it based on the feedback that we got from the neighborhood. Lisa also mentioned that, um, the, the mandatory commercial that we're going to build here is actually a little bit more than the mandatory commercial under the current plan. So, uh, for what that's worth, we're, we're taking that commercial up slightly. And if you look at the, the overall density of this, just from a square footage standpoint, it's actually less square footage than what's being proposed or than what currently is approved. Wanted to focus a little bit on the commercial market because that's, that's, uh, you know, a big part of what we're doing here. I'm sure you're all familiar, the city did a study in 2009, February of 2019, which was pre-COVID. We went through that study. Here, I'm not going to bore you with the, uh, too much detail here, but there was some, some important information that was discovered in that study. Vacancy trends have really jumped up over the last five years. You know, there was also discussion about how retail, even at that time, was changing. It's changed even more with COVID. And, and, and there was a lot of, a current in that study of, you know, maybe overbuilt in Louisville, and there's high vacancy rates. We track our own set of what I would call comps, which really is more specific to what we think we would be competing with if we were, uh, you know, if we were to build the 15,000 square feet, if it were to be approved and we were to build it. And when you look at those numbers, I, as a, as a real estate developer and an owner of commercial and residential, pretty shocking. We're over 40% vacancy for what we would call similar products. So any commercial stock built out, built after 2000. And our area is sort of up and down, um, up and down the highway, and you draw some lines to capture all that commercial. And, um, uh, it's, there's a high vacancy. And obviously that's a snapshot in time, that's today. But that's what we're tracking in about a 1.5, five mile radius. And then we also look at what's in the pipeline. And, um, you know, again, it's everybody's guess, this actually gets built, but this is what's in the pipeline to be built in the next two years. And it's a large number. It's over 100,000 more square feet coming. And so with the vacancy, um, with the space in the pipeline, and then we also know a lot of other vacant, empty commercial lots, uh, that's concerning to us. So our focus is really on the community serving for this, uh, for this community in this micro area. So just a quick summary of that, we're seeing in our, in our study, a product built after 2000, we're seeing a 40% vacancy. And that's, uh, you know, 100, over 160,000 square feet of vacant commercial space. Uh, there's a lot in the pipeline, but also what we learned by meeting with the community was there's a concern about that as well. Mainly when it comes to a concern about adding more retail or, or commercial than what we're proposing. And mainly that was around congestion, uh, both, uh, you know, and mainly traffic was the concern with the community. Um, so just to summarize everything I just went through, uh, you know, we, we think this was the right plan. We spent a lot of time with the neighborhood groups and studying the area. And I, you know, I'm, I'm a Boulder County resident. I'm very familiar with Louisville and the area. And, um, you know, this, this plan that we're proposing is actually less dense than what's, uh, approved today. It will create less traffic. Um, and we have a traffic study that we submitted, um, for the project. And that's probably one of the higher items up on the, uh, up on the list of what the local community wants or doesn't want in form of more traffic. It's consistent with the surrounding areas. Uh, there's been some talk about density, and I think Lisa showed you some of that. But, you know, we're very consistent with what's across the street and what's to the south of us. Uh, and we think this is the right fit for the property. And in fact, we think it's probably, it, it, it could be more dense. But this is what's, uh, sort of resonating, uh, better with the, with our presentations within the community. And then, as I mentioned, we, we, we spent a lot of time with the, with the local stakeholders and, uh, obviously not everybody is, is thrilled about what we're doing, but we felt like the outreach and the amount of people that showed up and the comments and the discussions that we had, we felt like, um, we had a plan that largely the community was supporting. Um, and then my last point is just really our, our lack of housing in Boulder County and Colorado. And this will bring new housing, uh, to, to Louisville, and we think that's important as well. So thank you. And I'm, uh, certainly available to answer any questions.
Okay. Time for Commissioner Questions of Advocate, Commissioner Deal. I see your hand up.
Yeah. So Brian, can you go back? I think it's slide five. So the, uh, Highway 287 in Arapahoe, that's a hundred, 126,000. I think those are the TiVo properties, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. But I guess the question to you would be, that developer believes that they can occupy 126,000 square feet right across the way there in Lafayette. You, and we don't think we can occupy 30,000 in Louisville?
Well, um, not, I don't think so today. Um, I'm looking at the numbers and I'm looking at the vacancy and I'm looking at the rental rates. And, and I, I, I don't believe you can. You know, not in this location, you know, I think as you get more in the centers of influence, closer to, closer to the old town or closer out to, out to the highway, I think, you know, there's, those are the places where I would be more comfortable building it. But, um, you know, point, point made here, uh, the current owner marketed the foundry program that you, that, that was, that's in place today. They marketed for three years and never got one LOI or one lease to lease for commercial space. They also marketed the food hall for several years and never got an operator for the food hall. So that, that tells me a, a little bit about, is it the, is it, is it a combination of the, the micro area and the site that, that maybe, um, is not going to be a widespread opportunity for commercial?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Good question.
Other questions for the applicant?
Um, thank you, Mr. Bear. I have a, a question about if, if, um, how would you say that your development meets the intent of the city's small area plan for this particular area? I, and, and, and I don't know, maybe, maybe you're, I'm assuming you're pretty familiar with it, but.
Yeah. No, I, we've, we've read through it and, and actually, uh, it was, it was a point of discussion in our, a bunch of our neighborhood meetings. And I, I believe the staff report, uh, addresses it as well. We think it's consistent with that. And that was, that was one of the things that, um, and in our neighborhood meetings, when we were debating three story versus two story, that was one of the things that came up, uh, in that, that small area plan, what, what, what was appropriate there? And we ended up backing off our three story and coming down to two story because the neighborhood wanted it, but also it was more consistent, I think, with the small area plan.
Okay. And then I guess, I think you, the other question I had, you, you actually, I think mostly answered, so don't feel obligated to add too much more. But your, your sense of, of why you wanted to propose this change versus just giving, being one of the people that would, um, do a letter of intent or something on the current foundry PUD, you, you would cite the things that you've explained to us in these series of slides for why you feel like your new proposal, um, is going to be better for, for the city and for your, um, for your group than the current proposal? I mean, than the existing approved?
Yeah, I think, I think in two ways, in two ways. One is, I, I, I have my own view of, of the, of what the commercial should be like. And what it should be. And I think it's going to be smaller tenant, local boutique type stuff. And the current plan is not, not really set up for that. It's more a big food hall open. And then there's larger sort of flex spaces. We, our view is that this is more of a community serving, uh, sort of boutique area on the commercial. But then on the residential, um, I, again, I, my view of the product is different. That was a condo product that was more vertical. And our, our product is an attached, more single family feeling, which I think works, works better. Me personally, I think works better. And the feedback from the community would work better in this, in this area.
Thank you. I, I appreciate you, um, I, I appreciate your explanation there. Thank you.
Commissioner Howe.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Um, you know, one of the comments from the citizens was that this was a gateway to Louisville. And I wonder what, what you, what characteristics do you think this development highlights or emphasizes um, in respect to people maybe seeing Louisville for the first time coming through this development or buy this development?
Yeah, great question. Um, you know, we, we haven't developed, we haven't designed the buildings yet. So a lot of that will get achieved with the design that comes in. But I just think the fact that, uh, the, 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 the mixed use scheme that we're doing here, where you will, when you come in, let's just say you're coming headed south and you're coming in, you will see the combination of mixed use with the commercial that's really sitting kind of out more on the highway. And then the residential that's going to run, run along Pascal. And so because we're going to be, we're do, we'll be doing two story there, it'll be a nice edge. But you'll also really see that mixed use as you come in. So, um, both of those will be visible from that main intersection there.
And another, another concern from the, the citizen feedback that I read was maybe how large the residential units would be and that maybe there wouldn't be a large master bedroom and, and maybe there'd be more uh, a different kind, maybe not people who are using it as a long-term residence. What, do you know, I know that these buildings haven't been approved, but you know how much acreage there is and how many residential you're proposing? Can you give us an idea about what the average, uh, square footage would be for one of these residential units you're proposing?
Yeah, we, we, like, like you said, we haven't designed the units yet, but what we're looking at is, is consistency in, in, in the neighborhood and what's across the street. And so these will be attached. So by definition, they will be a little bit smaller. But, you know, to, to, if I had, you know, if I had to answer that question right now, we're probably looking at, you know, 2,000-ish, 2,200 square foot units. You know, you know, as an average, maybe some that are smaller, some that are larger. Uh, we were committed to providing two car garages to the units. That was something that the city or that the community wanted. You know, so these aren't going to be, you know, large, single family homes. They're going to be more efficient, attached homes. The, 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 the homes on Calix will match closer to what's around that park. And the homes that are out on, um, on, on the highway or on, on the main road will be more appropriate for that edge, you know? And that's, that's the idea.
All right. Thanks, Brian.
Any further questions for the applicant?
The commission, uh, Vice Chair. One, one more quick one. Um, Mr. Bear, could, if you could go back to the, your kind of analysis of a current commercial. Yeah, thank you. I, I just had a quick question for you. On the, on that Highway 287 to Arapahoe and the totals on that bottom part of that spreadsheet page there, is that the, is that the, what I believe Erie is calling the nine mile corner? Is that what that stuff is or is, is that, is it something different? I'm just curious, just so I know in my head.
It's actually, it's actually the west of that.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
And I don't, and this, and this, uh, I, this grid here, uh, uh, it does include, uh, this, the, the, the product just north of us. Yeah.
Um, okay. I'm not sure I understood your last comment there, but.
Yeah, I just, I was looking at the grid to see if it included the product to the north in Lafayette.
I think you're talking about row two baseline and 95th, those 15,000 square feet, 0%.
Oh, yeah. I think that's.
Oh, right. Okay. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
So obviously that's still undeveloped.
Yep. Okay.
Hey, uh, I will now open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Uh, I would ask that members of the public who wish to speak limit themselves to three minutes and, and remind everyone that you cannot aggregate your time. And I would also ask that you please state your name and full address, um, before you make your comment. So do we have any members of the public who would like to make a comment? And, and if you're on the phone, it's star nine. And if you're on Zoom, you hit the raise hand button. Uh, Mr. Larson, can we unmute Mr. Larson?
Yes. So, um, there you go. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, my name is Gary Larson. I live at, uh, the Stick Ranch Patio Homes across from this development. Back in 2015, we put the, put together a group called the 95th Quarter Coalition, which represented over 1,800 homes in 11 different HOAs along the corridor on Highway 42 between South Boulder Road and Baseline. We successfully worked with WW Rentals, uh, to get approval in Lafayette for Indian Peaks Marketplace, which is just to the north of Pascal. And we worked with the original, uh, RMCS group on the, uh, uh, foundry, uh, that is currently approved. In 2016, at the same time Louisville was putting together the South Boulder Small Area Plan with a vision for what would go in along this corridor. And as it turns out, the community's vision was spot on with what, uh, the conclusions, uh, came up with in the, uh, small area plan. And that is to have, uh, the 76,000 square feet of commercial, including an anchor restaurant with, uh, residential units and, uh, accommodating empty nesters to keep, uh, inside the city. And, uh, this was passed by the city council and at the time, and by the way, passed unanimously. And at the time, city council, mo- almost all members were saying it's too bad that we didn't have the small area plan as a guide, uh, for planning on this. Um, I don't support the current proposal, uh, with two generic commercial strip malls. Well, we've got strip malls around here that are unoccupied. Uh, I'm also opposed to the high density townhomes along Highway 42. I think that would look very. I'm also opposed to the high density townhomes along Highway 42. I think that would look very tacky coming into Louisville. In the survey that was done of the people that participated in the small area plan, I'm going to read a quote here regarding this quarter. The survey respondents indicated a preference for more senior and affordable housing, but not much more residential otherwise. Respondents also wanted more restaurants and community shops, public gathering spaces, shared workspaces, mixed use environments, pedestrian friendly buildings. So what would be very well received by the entire community here, and Brian talks about the support of the community. Believe me, there is more. There are more people, more homes represented that are against this project, and you may see that in the letters coming in. But number one, what we would propose is to eliminate all the 25 townhomes along Highway 42 and replace them with creatively designed buildings, including an anchor restaurant. That's what got everybody excited before was to have that anchored restaurant. And when Brian mentions restaurants, what he's proposing, a strip mall restaurant, what people envision is the original restaurant that was going to be up on the second floor and quite the gathering space. Go ahead, build the 17 duplex units along Calix. But according to the survey done by the city in the small area plan, the city should try to have main floor master bedrooms to try to retain the empty nesters in the area. The commercial area would have a meandering sidewalk connecting various stores and restaurants. It would be very similar to Forest Park, which if you go take a look at it, and if you go back to that spreadsheet that was shown earlier, you'll see that the Forest Park area that Brian just showed was talking about and was on the spreadsheet is 70 to 80% occupied. It's unique. It draws people in. If you go up there, basically any time of day, you're going to have a hard time finding parking space. Nissi's used to be right adjacent to that, which was a big attraction. Well, guess what? If we have a park area here with commercial in it, leading through the duplexes that Brian wants to build and into Park, Steel Ranch Park, you could have summer concerts in Steel Ranch Park. It it's it it would be a great flow of residents into this commercial area. So we'd like to see more commercial and no townhomes. Go with the duplexes with main floor master bedrooms to get the aging population and disabled people as well. So we can do better than this. This is one of the last key lots available in Louisville. And that's pointed out in the comp plan, in the small area plan. We can do better than this. We can get something that the people will be proud of and other communities will say, go take a look at what they've done there. That's what we want to do here. And if you go up and take a look at Forest Park, you'll see that. You'll see the people, all the different unique.
May I ask you to wrap up, Mr. Larson?
Okay, I'm wrapped. Thank you for your time and thank you for serving the community as well. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Other other members of the public who would like to provide comment this evening?
I don't see any hands raised by Chair Hefner. Again, as a reminder, everyone, you can hit the raise hand button or star nine if you're on your phone.
Well, seeing none, I would entertain an applicant closing statement if there is one.
Um, yeah, no, I I think I've I presented everything that I wanted to present. I I again, I I hope folks understand that we're not designing a product right now. We're not designing buildings. We're not designing flow, where the commercial is, where the units are. That all comes later in the P U D amendment. What we're doing now is just indicating the types of uses and the density that we can do here. And so Mr. Larson's comments, you know, we hear that and we're excited to get to the next phase, which is the P U D to to do those types of things and design a product that really fits in with this location.
Thank you, and thanks for bearing with us on the continuance and coming back to see us again. At this time, I'd entertain a staff closing statement if there is one.
Um, sure. So I don't have anything additional other than staff continues to recommend approval, given the changes in the concurrency whereby, you know, requirement at the previous meeting. I just would like to remind the commission, since we are down to four, four again, that we cannot advance the application without a motion that passes. So it doesn't mean, you know, so whatever motion you make, whether it be a motion of approval, a motion of denial, what have you, we do need a motion that passes. And so if we get to that point where we're kind of stuck, if it goes that way again, you know, then certainly how happy to help you navigate through some options once you all have a chance to deliberate. So just wanted to throw that out there again, since we're at an even number, but I have nothing further on the application.
Okay, well, I will then close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will now deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will receive. Commissioner Deal, would you like to lead us off?
Sure. So I continue to be unsuayed by the analysis and the recommendation to kind of reduce what was promised in the beginning, which was the 76,000 square feet of commercial. I know it's been five years, maybe five long years, but I'm I think that the vision, as was originally presented and approved by planning and city council, something that we want to continue to try and shoot for. And I'm not yet quite ready to support kind of giving up and adding townhomes to the front side of of Highway 42, the gateway to Louisville. I think there's innovative and creative ways that commercial can be developed. I recognize that it's more difficult in this environment with our state income property tax issues. And I recognize that developing residential townhomes in Louisville is a very profitable and very easy product to sell. But I think we can, we can hold out and do better. And I also recognize, you know, we want to be aligned with the small area plan. And I don't think the current while the conceptual plan is not binding, it does not necessarily align with that first or single story buildings fronting the road. I think the, you know, single story commercial maybe backing up to maybe a little bit taller as we go further back in the property would align with the small area plan. It is unfortunate that the small area plan was approved by a huge number of citizens. I guess a huge number of citizens participated. I think it was four months after the GDP was approved. So it's unfortunate that that timing didn't work out better, but you know, having not developed this property in that time period, I think it's it's acceptable that we, as the planning commission and the city council strive to align that property with that small area plan, even though it it did come afterwards. So I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Howe, do you have deliberation comments?
Yeah. You know, I I think if you know, Tocota is actually of Sioux origin and the meaning is a friend to everyone. And I'd love for this proposal to be a friend to everybody. But we're in a different place now than we were a few years ago. I think one of the one of the main obstacles, citizens cite in objections proposals that they're looking for something better than the existing nondeveloped land, which does currently serves as a large buffer from Highway 42. For the city and citizens of Louisville, a commercial development would create the most revenue. However, this GDP provides residential opportunities to counterbalance other commercial heavy proposals that we've heard recently. I'm not convinced this will improve the quality of life for current Louisville citizens. But I do believe this will benefit current and proposed commercial development by allowing more available residential and housing. In the P U D deliberations, I do look forward to more creative parks, better pass-throughs, a larger setbacks. Yet more commercial units and square footage does not serve the city if the vacancies are prolific. So I I'm not sure that I I like I like the idea of more residential. I I don't think that more commercial will serve the city's purposes long term.
Commissioner Moline?
Thank you, Vice Chair Hefner. I I actually align or I actually echo a lot of what Commissioner Howe just mentioned. I I would want, nothing would make nothing would make me happier because I was part of the both of the small area plan process and the and this latest GDP approval. So nothing would make me happier than to see this, you know, to see that have built out in the way that we approved it those, you know, several years ago now. I I just don't think things are, I I I think we would, if if we were to try and wait for something, I think we're we're just going to be looking at a pile of dirt again for you know, an extended period of time. And again, like I said, I I want I would want nothing more than to see that that original existing approval realized. I just don't think it's I just don't think it's going to happen in our current climate. And so what what then I start to to consider as as Commissioner Howe was mentioning, you know, the we've now started to approve some things on the planning commission that are taking a different approach to the mixed use, mixed residential with some commercial, which is what we had been trying on this part of town with North End as well, and and we're just not seeing these places activate like we'd hoped. And so we are seeing things in other parts of the town take off again and and see proposals for things taking off down by the, for example, the Louisville Tech Center, where we have more, you know, just sites that are more with sort of monoculture kinds of zoning and not the the mix that we would like to see up here on the northern part of the town. And I I I'm I appreciated Mr. Bear's explanation for why, why, why he felt that it wouldn't really be feasible to do the thing that we approved here previously. So I am, I also would also agree with Commissioner Howe on the, you know, I'm I'm comfortable approving the the GDP amendment with the the broad outlines of the dwelling units and the commercial square footage, knowing that we're going to have an opportunity at a P U D stage to address at least some of the concerns that we've heard about the 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 gateway effect. I do feel like this is an important part of Louisville, and we want to be showing our best side forward here. But again, things have changed in that regard, too. We now have a a portion of Lafayette that's developed just to the north here of Pascal. This isn't this gateway is is maybe a little different than other parts of the city. This, you know, this gateway now is surrounded by incorporated lands at all of the three other corners now. So this isn't like a one of our gateways that where we have a separation from other municipalities by open space, for example. We're, this is one place where the cities have sort of come together. And so I I guess because partly because of that, I do feel like we can address some of those gateway kind of concerns at a P U D stage. So but I I I've really appreciated the public comments that we've heard throughout this, not much tonight, but at the previous meeting. I've really appreciated Commissioner Deal's comments about what he envisions and would like to see on this property. So I think this has been a, this is one that that we've had some really good thoughtful comments from all quarters here and especially from residents at Steel Ranch. And so, yeah, I it's made for an interesting process. So that's that's where I'm at.
Thanks. I, you know, I I couldn't agree more with your comments, Commissioner Moline, especially with respect to the input that we have received, and I would really, you know, encourage those members of the public to stay involved as as this moves forward or doesn't. But but if it moves to the P U D stage, a lot of these comments really will be critical at that stage and thinking about what this looks like if it does get built out and making sure that the the actual vision on the ground is as consistent with the small area plan as it can be. You know, I think the thing in the staff report that that strikes me is it talks about the small area plan principles and this idea of allowing flexibility to respond to market supported uses. And it it's just hard for me to see that there's there's market support for the the amount of additional commercial space, just with the, I mean, I I thought Mr. Bear's presentation was helpful, but you you actually don't really need to see the numbers to understand that there's a lot of vacant commercial space here and and around the area and that that building more isn't going to really solve that problem. And I would also say that this is a time where we, as a city, are you know, grappling with housing afford affordability and what do we do about that problem? And and certainly more housing cannot hurt in that regard. You know, I know there are differing opinions about what the right answer is. But if there are more places to live for people who want them, that can't be a bad thing.
Yeah.
So with that said, I would entertain a motion if there is one.
Chair or Vice Chair Hefner, seeing seeing where this is likely going, I'm just curious. The the P U D phase versus this GDP phase, and I think multiple people, multiple commissioners have talked about the small area plan. Do you think it advantageous to add a condition to the approval to make sure that the, you know, the P U D or the the next step in the process aligns with the small area plan, specifically that the 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 buildings that front Highway 42 are one story?
Boy, I don't, I I I certainly agree with the sentiment. Maybe maybe staff has an opinion as to whether that's something that makes sense to add to a GDP. I would worry about sort of making it detailed enough to be meaningful.
Sure. So I'm happy to weigh in here with just a few options. So that's certainly within your discretion to do either relying on the current small area plan policy or any other kind of character concerns that you find in the code. So just to clarify, the the small area plan does set forth that one primarily one story buildings running the corridors are preferred. However, it does give kind of guidelines and flexibility for when and how a second story can be appropriate. And so it's not a hard and fast rule within that small area plan, just to be clear on that.
Yeah.
Then just so you do have that flexibility at P U D. And I think the applicant, you know, has certainly heard where you all are on this tonight. So you can you can add that as a requirement if you like. You certainly all can rely on the small area plan policy and review it at P U D if you're more comfortable giving the applicant that kind of flexibility now, knowing that he's heard this discussion. And then also, you know, depending on timing, we're picking off a comprehensive plan amendment next year. And we haven't, you know, just to just to kind of capture where the small area plan may be within a year or two. The comprehensive plan may or may not, you know, kind of incorporate or overwrite some of those self builder roads, small area plans. And so anytime we kind of open up those policy boxes, it will be really interesting to see what portions of those kind of get further amended. And so certainly that's a snapshot in time now. You can embed it or you can wait to see what comes to fruition on the P U D or comp plan if that gets ahead of this. So you have options there, though.
I'll just say this. I'll leave it to the commissioners who are likely to vote for approval. It sounds like to, you know, decide if that's an amendment or a condition you want to add. Otherwise, you know, we can wait for the P U D phase.
Commissioner Deal, can I ask just real quick, can you can you just share your the 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 concern that you have with the two story buildings there on the corridor? That it it's a it's a kind of a visual and an appearance sort of thing. Do you could you would you want to elaborate just for a second?
Yeah, that's that's exactly right. It's if you look at the conceptual plan, which of course is not binding. But I feel like while it's not binding, it does anchor the development to some degree in terms of this is kind of where we think we're going to go. So, you know, I think it's fair to the development team to basically say kind of where we think we're going to end up and give them that input. and give them that input at this phase, right? Even though it's not binding in this phase. That being said, yes, to your point, I think a two, a, a set of two-story townhomes, you know, on Highway 42 affects the view shed. It just makes it feel tighter and crowded, probably darker. You know, so that's why the, I think all the good folks who participated in the Small Area Plan felt a single story on Highway 42, fronting Highway 42, just a better, better feel aesthetically.
Yeah.
Just wanted to chime in with one other thought, real quick, if I may, commissioners. So looking at the Small Area Plan, I had that pulled up, and I'm happy to share my screen if you want. What's interesting about the Small Area Plan is that got approved after the Foundry PUD got adopted. And so really, if you look at the land use plan, it actually overlays the existing foundry site plan. However, that foundry site plan had 35 feet tall buildings on fronting 42. So there is, not to say that the policy's not in place, but what could have been approved was it for this particular site? Does it meet current policy? Not to say the current policy doesn't apply, but just, just want to throw that out there for everyone as well.
I, I guess I, boy, do I ever appreciate Commissioner Deal, your, your thoughts on that. I'm, I am, I, I guess I'm a little hesitant just myself to, to add that to our approval at this point, in part because I, I think I could be, I think I could be compelled at a, at a PUD stage if somebody was able to show, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something interesting with the treatment along the corridor facing the highway and a uniform, like across the entire corridor, but maybe an allowance of, of two-story height, let's say it's somewhere, but one story at, at other, at other portions of the property facing the corridor. I could be open to kind of creatively looking at that. And I guess I'm, I'm just expressing a concern that if we, if we issued kind of it, this sentiment for it needs to be one story, I, I'm, I don't know. I, I guess it might, to me, be just discouraging a little bit of creativity with how the applicant could look at that in the future. I do share your concerns, however, of this sort of a solid wall of buildings along Highway 42 is, is, I share your concerns about that, so.
Yep, yep, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. And I, I mean, I, I really think, and I want to make clear, I, I don't think that we're approving the, the conceptual site plan. I don't think we're giving it any sort of consideration beyond it's sort of demonstrative of, of what the applicant is thinking. But I, I sort of see the PUD stages as being pretty critical here and our opportunity to sort of get the, get the details right now that we looked at the 30,000-foot view.
Yeah, that works.
Yeah.
And maybe just to bolster that, that discussion point just a little bit, Commissioner Deal, I, I also agree with you. I like the setbacks, the idea of a big setback there. But of course, these are all the PUD level. And, and I think Commissioner Moline is right. I think if we, if we limit some of that, then we may limit our choices in the future. I, I like the idea of setbacks and a gradual rise from height. But I think we need to o, open our eyes to all the options there and decide from the whole, whole basket of options.
Sounds good.
Hey, do we have a, a motion at this point?
I'll, I'll make a motion for approval of Resolution Number 10, Series 2021, a request for a Seventh Amendment to the Dakota General Development Plan to allow up to 59 dwelling units and 15,000 square feet of commercial development and a Second Amendment to the Foundry Subdivision Agreement to remove the requirement for occupancy by persons 55 years of age or older. Did I get that right?
Sounded right to me. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Could we have a roll call vote?
Your deal?
No.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Vice Chair Heffner?
Yes. With that, the motion carries. At this time, I believe it is Planning Commission comments. Do any commissioners have comments they'd like to share?
I guess I'd like to say thank you to all the citizen input and all the work that the staff has done. I know that this has been a long process, and I, I hope we do get it right in the end. We do want it to be a friend for everyone, and we do want it to be serving both the citizens, the city, and the developer.
Well said.
Yeah.
All right, are there any staff comments?
Um, sure. So we are still not quite ready to go on the two PUD amendments that I had mentioned last time, but we are bringing forth. So on City Council's work plan, just a little bit of background, on September 9th, we will have a meeting. City Council's work plan this year included updates to the city's energy conservation code. And so really typically, those are housed within our building code and don't come to the Planning Commission. However, there is one component that will be coming to you that's going to be an amendment that we had within Title 17. And that's kind of a related provision for electric vehicle car chargers. And so you'll see the whole ordinance because it's all embedded, and it's really about kind of improving all of our energy efficiency standards. But there is going to be a provision that you specifically need to review. And then that's going to City Council later this fall. So you will see that code amendment, provided we stay on track. It's at the Building Code Board of tonight as well. So I think we're on track for next September night, so that's been noticed for you. So it should be, you know, a fairly compact agenda, but we are interested in hearing your thoughts. And, and when we, I do mean that, and this is kind of a new thing for the city. We don't have these types of standards on the books. And so, you know, as you're thinking about electric vehicles over the next few weeks, think about maybe kind of where you think car charging could be helpful and kind of that right quantity, and how do we try and get this right for, you know, kind of the next, next generation for the city? So we're kind of venturing into some new territory, so just a heads up on that. And then just another work plan item for you. Dark sky lighting, I know we've talked about that from time to time. We've received direction from City Council to hopefully peel that off ahead of time from the design guidelines and do kind of a standalone code amendment for that. So we're in the process of getting some direction from City Council, but we are really hopeful that we'll be able to bring you a code amendment to adopt citywide dark sky lighting standards, hopefully yet this year. So just a little heads up on some other work we're doing, as well as just all the development review cases that will be coming your way over the upcoming months. So I don't have anything further to add other than that.
Thank you. Unless anyone has anything else, thanks all for a, a good meeting, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks again, everyone, for all of your hard work. Always appreciate you. We'll see you soon.
Yep. Bye-bye.